Okay, I will call to order the Santa Barbara Planning Commission of July 17th, 2008. Ms. Rodriguez, will you please call the order? I mean, call the roll.
Absolutely. Vice Chair Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Bartlett.
He's stuck in the parking lot. He'll be here.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jacobs.
Here.
Commissioner Justice.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
And Chair Myers.
Here. Ms. Hubbell, are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of exigent items?
No, Chair Myers, there are not.
Announcements and/or appeals?
Just an, I'm sure all of you already know, but the 1298 Coast Village Road Appeal was heard on Tuesday, and the Planning Commission decision was upheld, although they did add additional conditions about reducing the size, bulk, and scale, and also denied the portion of the rear, or the northerly modification that applied to the second floor. So that will be moving on to the Architectural Board of Review.
Thank you.
Also, I've had a request from Design Review staff. We need a volunteer from the Planning Commission to review recommendations for the Solar Awards. One meeting next week, most likely.
Is there a date for the meeting?
Don't have a date for it yet, but if we know who it is, then I'm sure they'll work with you.
I would love to do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Mr. White, did you have something?
Isn't there a Staff Hearing Officer appeal?
There is. I've got it right here, hold on. We do have an appeal, a new appeal from Staff Hearing Officer, scheduled for September 4th at 1420 Almeida Padre Serra. That has been appealed to the Planning Commission.
Okay. At this time, we will take comments from members of the public for anything that is not on our agenda. If anyone wishes to speak to any, anything that's not on our agenda, please step forward. I don't see anybody, so I'll close that public hearing and start with our first item, item number three. It's a discussion item, Development Impact Fees and Infrastructure Financing Study. Case Planner Liz Limon. And I see we have Paul Casey here as well.
Good afternoon, Chair Myers and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Paul Casey, Community Development Director. I just wanted to introduce this item and put a little context about what we hope that your conversation is today with regards to this item. This is a presentation by Paul Silvern. He's a partner with Hamilton, Rupinowitz, and Allshuler, and I'll let him introduce himself in more detail. But he's an expert on local government finance and economic analysis and local, regional economy, with a good deal of experience both in the private and public sector, and brings a really good foundation to have this discussion about impact fee analysis and ways to fund infrastructure. The City Council, as we were starting the Plan Santa Barbara process, has been interested in looking at the city considering adopting developer impact fees. We're one of the few communities that does not have developer impact fees, and we haven't on purpose for a number of years. But I think this is a good opportunity for us to reevaluate that and make the policy decision about whether we want to continue that or whether we want to adopt impact fees. City Council said, "Let's jumpstart that dialogue by beginning a study and looking at what other jurisdictions are doing with developer impact fees, how much might they raise for the city of Santa Barbara, what are kind of the options out there that we could look at." And so that's why we hired Mr. Silvern and his firm to kind of jumpstart that dialogue. And so what he's bringing to us today is kind of his report and analysis of what the options are available for the city of Santa Barbara. At the same time, or about the same time, the City Council appointed an Infrastructure Financing Task Force, a citizens' task force, to look at how to fund capital improvements for the city of Santa Barbara. We have over $150 million of unmet capital needs in our adopted capital improvement program. So how do we go about trying to turn that around and fund our critical infrastructure that we need as a city as well to provide services to the community? And so you'll see in the report as well, different options for analyzing that. Mr. Silvern has met with the Infrastructure Financing Task Force and educated them as well about options for consideration as they prepare their report. We expect their report to the City Council early fall of this year. They're in the middle of meeting right now, and hopefully they'll have something wrapped up and prepare a presentation for the City Council in that regard. And then just one other context to be thinking about this is the whole concept of transfer development rights, especially as it relates to the Gaviota Coast and the Naples Project. The county is considering adopting an ordinance to allow transfer development rights from the Naples Project that the city of Santa Barbara and other jurisdictions could participate in. And just one of the options that's being considered is the concept of perhaps the city adopting a fee of some sort that could then go to buy down the development potential in the Gaviota Coast as well. So that's just another nugget to kind of keep in, in the context as we hear the conversation go forward today. But with that overview, I'll turn it over to Mr. Silvern, and enjoy the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. Again, I'm Paul Silvern with HRNA Advisors. We're a national economic development, real estate advisory, and public policy consulting firm with offices in New York and Los Angeles. I run the Los Angeles area office and have previous experience working in the Santa Barbara regional area on various issues from time to time over the years. As Paul indicated in his introduction, what we're bringing to you today is a general overview, and I want to emphasize "general," this is not intended to be a tutorial on all the different ways that one can go about financing infrastructure, but it is intended to be a general overview of some of the methods that are most commonly used to help inform the discussion that Paul described that is ongoing with the Infrastructure Task Force, and particularly for today's discussion, to focus on one, one particular financing issue that we understand is of interest to the Commission and certainly to the, to the City Council, having to do with a system of development fees. I want to emphasize upfront, however, that in talking about development fees, those fees can only be imposed on projects prospectively. So while they are and can be an important component of a system of keeping up with the needs for infrastructure in the city, they will not help you finance the $145.7 million of unfunded facilities that are currently sitting in the city, in the city's capital program. So it's important to keep the distinction in mind as we talk about this. But that said, development fees can play an important role in trying to make sure that that scale of unfunded need doesn't get any worse going forward. And there are a variety of limitations and caveats about the use of, of development fees that I'll go over with you. The information that I'd like to cover today in this overview is the reverse of what we presented to the Infrastructure Financing Task Force in May, because they were much more interested in the bottom half of the slide than the top half of the slide. But we understand that the Commission is interested somewhat more in the development fee side of this, and so that's what we're going to emphasize today. Liz, you want to?
As some of you may know, financing public infrastructure is one of the most significant challenges that city administrators and finance directors and councils and commissions face because infrastructure projects very often are very expensive, not always the most attractive projects, and very often the need for them is not very well understood by the public. And so trying to come up with both appropriate and creative ways of financing them in order to make sure that the facilities and services that are necessary to support growth over time are there is a very significant challenge that, that all cities face, not just here in Santa Barbara, but, but elsewhere. The difficulties in financing infrastructure, in addition to just the formidable issues involved in selecting the appropriate financing techniques and figuring out technically how to do it, have been made more complicated over the last 20 to 30 years because of various changes, particularly in state law. Starting with Proposition 13 back in 1978, which among other things puts significant restrictions on the use of general obligation bonds, public administrators and finance directors then got very creative in coming up with alternative ways of, of financing city budgets and county budgets around the state. And there were a series of other measures that were adopted by the voters over subsequent years to close some of the loopholes in Proposition 13 and to change the way that some of those subsequent financing techniques were developed, including Proposition 62 in 1986, which imposed some limitations on the use of special taxes like utility user taxes, transient occupancy taxes, and business license programs of various kinds. And then more recently in 1996, the voters amended the state constitution with Proposition 218 to require, among other things, a two-thirds public vote in order to impose special taxes and a majority vote before general taxes could be imposed. So while there are understandable reasons why the voters may have wanted to have more say over the imposition of these various forms of public financing, they make the job of cities and counties trying to fund their infrastructure even more daunting than would otherwise be the case. As Paul indicated at the outset, your six-year capital plan includes about $442 million of needs of various kinds for facilities and services, both in the individual departments and in the enterprise departments of the city of Santa Barbara. Only two-thirds of that total has identified funding. About $145.7 million of that total has been identified as needs that the city has going forward, but for which there are no identified sources of funds. These include some rather significant items, including a new police headquarters facility, a major aquatic center, a new fire station and improvements to some existing ones, a major remodel and seismic upgrade to another fire station, the Ortega Wealth Treatment Facility, and a variety of other things, including some multi-year programs, including street improvements to Lower Mission Creek, and pavement maintenance programs that are required to maintain the facilities that you have going forward. So these are very significant, very costly items, and it is a particular challenge to try to figure out where the money might come from in order to, to finance them. Listed on the slide here are the five general categories of financing techniques that are most often used to fund capital improvements. Long-term debt financing, or bonds, which you may be familiar with, is a method of essentially issuing debt, which is backed by a particular revenue stream in order to pay off the loan. Its advantage, of course, is that you get a large sum of money upfront, so that if you have a large expenditure, like building a new police headquarters, that you have to fund upfront. This is one technique that's particularly appropriate for getting that large sum of money in advance. Assessment districts are another form that are often used, and you have some here in Santa Barbara already. They are appropriate for particular sub-areas of the city or particular districts where there's a particular benefit that accrues to a particular area of the city, and a system of financing can be set up, which is based on a pro-rata share, usually on a per-property or per-frontage of property basis. That revenue stream can often be used to also support issuance of debt. Special taxes, like the ones that I measured before, and like the ones that I'm sure you're familiar with, like include such things as your Measure D sales tax override. Then there is the general category of exactions, development fees, and other fees, which is where I'm going to focus most of my discussion today. And lastly, whatever you can squeeze out of the general fund or the enterprise funds. But those are the five basic sources or categories of where money can come from to pay for public infrastructure of, of various kinds. The fourth of the five that I mentioned, exactions and fees, can be further broken down into these categories, and many of these will be familiar particularly to the Planning Commission, because these are things that you typically deal with on a fairly regular basis when you approve subdivisions in particular, using the, the authority under the Subdivision MAP Act to require dedications of land, or to require the payment and fees in lieu of land dedication, to set aside land within subdivisions for particular public facilities, whether they be schools or other things, and to impose various project design and improvement requirements. Those are all available to you under the, the Subdivision MAP Act. California's planning law also gives you the authority to impose various kinds of requirements through zoning regulations and to use development agreements, which, as I'm not familiar with how often those have been used in Santa Barbara, the city of Santa Barbara at least, but they are a form of, of agreement between a developer and a local jurisdiction through which more than the usual kinds of requirements can be imposed in return for the long-term benefit of the developer, of getting some security of the entitlements over an extended period of time. And in return for getting a little bit more, a little bit more certainty about the entitlement rules not changing over the build-out of a larger project, the host jurisdiction is entitled to ask for some other things that it might otherwise get under the usual zoning regulations. So there are a number, any of those tools under the California planning law or the Subdivision MAP Act also provide an opportunity for getting at least some of the infrastructure that you need going forward, quite apart from any fees that might be imposed. But again, these are all prospectively and don't help you with the, with the deficit that you already have. There are a variety of fees that are also very common, many of which you already charge, ranging everything from permit fees and connection fees, building permits, to a variety of regulatory fees. But the subject of development impact fees is where it fits into this particular category, and that's what I'll focus on next. You can skip forward two slides, Liz. Again, I want to emphasize that in the context of this unfunded capital plan, development fees aren't really going to help you there, because as I'll talk about in a few moments, under the legal structure applicable to development fees, these are essentially one-time charges on new development coming before you going forward in order to mitigate the impacts that those projects may have on various city systems in the future. But they cannot be used to essentially assess developers for the cost of the city's unwillingness or inability to keep up with the infrastructure demands previously. But that said, as, as I mentioned at the beginning, they may be a useful part of an overall program to make sure that the existing unfunded situation doesn't get worse over I'll say a little bit about the, the legal basis for development fees, highlight in general the process for implementing such a system, identify a couple of limitations on the use of development fees that I think are important for you to consider, go through some of the fees that are currently in place in the various jurisdictions around you in a Santa Barbara vicinity, ranging from San Luis Obispo to the north and down to areas of Ventura County, and then illustrate what, at least order of magnitude, what the city might be able to get in the way of development fees, so that you have some feel for the scale of what that might be able to fund, and then provide some cautions about the, the use of development fees. First, as to the legal basis of, for development fees, there is, of course, the Mitigation Fee Act, which was adopted in 1987. Coincidentally, at about the same time that the fairly well-known Nolan case coming from the California Planning, California Coastal Commission, was being decided by the U.S. Supreme Court on roughly the same set of issues, having to do with, with how far local government could go in imposing fees on developers in, in order to fund various mitigation measures. The Mitigation Fee Act is the basis for requiring NEXUS studies or reasonable relationship studies, and sets out a fairly detailed set of procedures and processes, some of which I'll, I'll describe for you today. But it's enshrined in Section 66,000 of the Government Code. The California Constitution, under the police power provisions, which is the basis for what you do on a regular basis exercising your powers under state zoning law, is another basis for, for imposing development fees, or, or requirements, and perhaps fees in lieu of those requirements. For example, it is very often that public art fees, for example, are imposed under a local government's police power jurisdiction. And there are many who believe that even affordable housing in lieu fees can be imposed through general police powers and not so much under the Mitigation Fee Act, although that's an unsettled area of state law at the moment. Then there is quite a bit of case law on this subject. I'm sure you've either read about or followed in various ways the debates over the years from both the federal courts and the state courts. As developers who feel they've been unfairly tagged for fees in one case or another have sought relief through the courts in order to undo those impositions, and there's now a fairly well-established chain of both federal and state law on this matter. But the, the one good thing about that chain of cases with the coincident development of the Mitigation Fee Act is that the basic requirements and procedures and potential administrative relief for unfair imposition of development fees is now fairly well-established as a result of all that history. In general, what the Mitigation Fee Act and more generally the case law underlying it or preceding it require that you do in order to put a development fee system in place at this moment in time is to do basically four things. First, you have to develop a so-called NEXUS study or relationship, reasonable relationship study, that demonstrates first what the purpose of the fee is and the specific use to which the fee would be put. You have to then go on to describe the relationship between the use of fees and the development that it would be imposed on. In some cases, development fees are imposed only on particular types of development, and in some cases, like traffic impact fees, they tend to be applied against everything in one way or another. You have to be able to show the need for the facilities and how that relates to the type of development that is being subject to the fees. And perhaps most importantly, and in the sense that most of the emphasis in the NEXUS studies tend to go, is proportionality. That is a demonstration that the amount of the fee bears a reasonable relationship and proportion to the cost of the facilities that the development project is necessitating, so that, so that there is some clear parity between the scale of impact that's being caused in the city in this case and the amount of the fee that's being charged. It is often the case, though not necessarily a requirement of the Mitigation Fee Act, that the financial feasibility of those fees also be tested. It's something that we have typically done in our work and many others have, advising cities and counties on using fee systems as part of this analysis, is to do some testing of those feasibility, the feasibility of those fees, because from the private development community, that's often the most significant bone of contention in, in terms of whether the fees will be put in place. The fee systems, once the, they've been developed through the course of the NEXUS study and particular dollar amounts have been set, are usually accompanied by implementing ordinances, fee resolutions, and a set of administrative guidelines. So both the planning staff and the developers potentially subject to the fees are clear about how the math is done. When you say you're applying a fee per square foot, is it net or gross? Are there particular parts of buildings, like in floor area definitions, that are removed from the calculation? And a variety of other administrative issues, such as at what point in the development process the fee is either, and, either assessed and/or collected. It obviously makes a big difference to developers, whether they have to pay a building permit or whether they pay a final inspection. The fee systems typically also have special time limits for public noticing, and there are usually provisions governing how they can be challenged legally that are, that need to be closely adhered to. The details of those requirements are all pretty well set out in the Mitigation Fee Act. Let me point out just a couple of general limitations on both the calculation and use of development fees that I think are worth keeping firmly in mind as you continue to discuss whether this is something that you want to pursue in Santa Barbara, quite apart from whether your colleagues in Goleta, Santa Barbara County, or other communities in, in the surrounding area have chosen to do so. First, development fees pay for facilities construction. They don't pay for operations and maintenance. They are legally restricted to only paying for facilities. And as the finance director and the department heads will be quick to tell you, one of the biggest problems with capital budgeting is that the emphasis is always on the stuff and not on the staff that are necessary to maintain and operate the stuff once it's built. It is very often the case that both in the budgeting process and certainly in the implementation process, that a lot of effort goes into figuring out how much buildings and facilities and services cost, but not what's required in order to maintain and service them over time. And unfortunately, development fees even used prospectively don't help you too much in that area, because they, they can only focus on physical construction. The second limitation that is important is that, as I said at the outset, you can't use development fees to make up for unwillingness or inability to keep up with the cost of your infrastructure needs in the past. You can only use development fees to, to help mitigate the infrastructure impacts of projects going forward. And it's important to, to remember that. Secondly, in the process of developing the math for, for the fee system, one of the things that's very important to take into account is whether the level of service, whether it's on a street system or for acreage of park space per thousand population, or whatever the metric is that is being used in the calculation, is not, is not one in which you are changing the, the level of service standard for new development from what you have done in the past, unless you have a separate source of money to make up for the difference between the cost implied by the new standard as compared with the old standard. Again, this is part of the process of trying to make sure that the fee system is fair and reasonable going forward, and that there's not an effort to try to sort of through the backdoor fund deficiencies from the past. The other limitation, of course, is that you can't impose the fee for one thing and then use it for something else. If you're imposing a traffic impact fee in order to mitigate the effect of new development on the street system, you can't turn around and use that money to pay for parkland acquisition. So it is very often the case that in citywide systems of, of development fees, in which there are a number of different things for which fees are being charged, you have to account for all of those things separately, and you have to be very careful to make sure that the money collected for one thing is only being used for the purpose for which it was designed and not something else. The next limitation that's important is that whatever funds are collected have to, quote, "be committed within five years" or "refunded on a pro-rata basis" to those developers that paid them. The law and statutes are a little unclear about what "commit" means. It doesn't say you have to actually spend the money within five years, but I think it's fair to say that the intended use of the money has to be clearly identified within five years of collection. And very often, it takes many years to collect enough money from each individual project to have enough in hand in order to fund the various improvements that are required, and I'll in a few moments show you an illustration of that. There also need to be a series of administrative procedures to avoid takings under, under federal and state constitutional law. You can't, you know, basically impose a fee to such a degree that it wipes out all economic value of property. I don't know of a case where that's actually occurred, but there are plenty of developers who allege it from time to time, and I'm sure you've had some experience with that here as well. But there need to be, in the development fee system and the ordinances that govern it, a set of procedures in order to allow for arbitration of any claims to that effect and a reasonable resolution of them. Another issue that very often comes up with development fee systems is that there are always projects in the approval pipeline at the time that the, the programs go into place. And so the regulations that you develop to implement a fee system need to take that into account. Very often, projects that have achieved a certain level of, of so-called completeness in the environmental review process or the administrative process are essentially allowed to proceed without being subject to these requirements. But picking exactly where in the approval process you would allow projects to proceed without being subject to any new system of fees and which you believe are appropriate to charge the fees to is another issue that is very sensitive with the development community and a source of significant discussion when these kinds of programs come forward, and therefore requires careful thought. Finally, one of the things that the development fee systems don't always do a good job of is anticipating how to make sure that whatever money is being collected over time maintains its value. And so there are not always good measures included in the programs to, to have inflation adjustments on the amount of the fees, or even when there are inflation factors built into the program, they very often use inflation measures like the Consumer Price Index, which don't bear very much relationship to the cost of construction and the cost of land. And so it is important to both have an inflation adjustment factor of some kind, a process of imposing it on an annual or periodic basis, and then using a measure that really reflects the cost of the infrastructure that you're trying to fund through the fee system. What I want to go through next in the next few slides, and I'll do it fairly quickly, is to give you a sense of both the type of fees that are imposed in many of the jurisdictions that surround you here in Santa Barbara, and give you a sense of the dollar rate. that surround you here in Santa Barbara, and give you a sense of the dollar range of the fees and how they are imposed. Needless to say, development fees are imposed all over the state of California to one degree or another. This is very common practice in most communities. But the fees vary widely by type, by amount, and in the way that they are calculated. And so it's a little difficult to give you a kind of apples-to-apples comparison across jurisdictions for various reasons, but I'd like to give you at least a little flavor for it so you get some sense. We've focused primarily on the jurisdictions that ring Santa Barbara, since you probably are, you may be more familiar with them, including the two unincorporated communities, Orca and, well, Goleta now, of course, is not unincorporated, but the two areas of the county, which you may know better because they've had systems of development fees for a very long time, and they are still in place. The new city of Goleta, you know, as part of their general plan update, has, I believe, increased the fees somewhat over what they used to be when the community was part of the county. But there are a variety of them in each of these jurisdictions, and I'll go through them with you. The most common development fees currently in place in the communities that ring Santa Barbara are various kinds of traffic fees, open space, parks and recreation fees, including more specialized fees focusing more specifically on trees and landscaping, parking fees of various kinds, street lighting, police or sheriff services, and fire suppression and emergency medical services. These are the ones that you see most often in the jurisdictions surrounding you. But there are others that are more unique to individual cities or counties, whether it's San Luis Obispo, Ventura, or Santa Barbara County. These include, among other things, public art fees, street and thoroughfare and bridge fees, aquatic fees, and of course, affordable housing in lieu fees, which I believe you have here for your inclusionary program in the city of Santa Barbara. First, with respect to traffic fees, you'll see here, in addition to just the, and on the next slide, the range of jurisdictions that have them, that like many other kinds of development fees, some are imposed on a per-square-foot basis, some on a per-dwelling-unit basis, some on an average daily trip basis in the case of traffic fees, and some on a per-peak-hour trip basis, all depending on the way that the nexus study was prepared and a judgment, particularly taking into account the administrative side, about what is the most appropriate way to measure and impose the fees. But you can see here that just in these four jurisdictions, you've got just about all of those methods represented and quite a bit of variation in the actual amount of the fees. The next slide shows them in four more jurisdictions, including Goleta and the unincorporated community of Orca, which has its traffic and transportation fees broken down into a couple of subcategories. It is very often to find that the fees are different for single-family than multifamily development, and between apartments and condominiums on the multifamily side. And in the Orca and Goleta case, there is a fairly extensive and detailed list of traffic fees that apply to individual land uses that goes on, you know, for quite a long list. Other jurisdictions require that the fee be imposed on a per-ADT or per-PM peak-hour trip, using the ITE trip rates as one way of making those calculations. But the traffic impact fees or other transportation-related fees are probably the most common. The next slide just shows the various way that this is imposed in the city of San Luis Obispo to the north and into the general unincorporated county area other than Orca and formerly unincorporated area of Goleta. The next category of fees that's fairly common are parks and recreation and various kinds of open space fees. Here again, you can see the variety of amounts and methods of imposing them on a per-square-foot or per-dwelling-unit basis. All of these, if they were adopted, you know, in recent years, are all subject, like the traffic impact fees and all of the others, to a careful analysis of what public improvements are required and how to fairly allocate these on a prorata share to new development. These are the fees in place in four more of the surrounding jurisdictions. Again, quite a bit of variation in amount and method of calculation. Fire fees are an important subject at the moment because many of the basis for financing your fire departments or the county fire service districts have not, for various reasons, kept up with the demand for those facilities and an unwillingness in general for voters to approve property tax increases to pay for them. And so many jurisdictions have been focusing on various kinds of development-related fees in order to supplement the funding necessary to expand those services, which are particularly important. They're important everywhere, of course, but particularly in fire-prone areas like this one. Here again, just like with traffic and park and recreation open space fees, they are imposed in a variety of different ways: per-square-foot, per-dwelling-unit, and sometimes just on a flat fee basis. I think you can skip over the parking fees. Police and sheriff, like fire, is another one that is imposed in some jurisdictions, not as many as is applicable to traffic fees, certainly. But here again, they help to supplement the budgets necessary, and in this case, we're talking primarily about facilities, although I don't know enough about the way that the sheriff fee is imposed in the county of Santa Barbara to know to what degree it actually pays for officers as opposed to facilities. But going forward, because of the Mitigation Fee Act and various judicial interpretations of the law, it is more likely the case that any sheriff or police-related fees would be targeted to facilities rather than services. Libraries is another public facility that is very often a subject of fees, and here are examples close to home about how that is imposed on a, either per-dwelling-unit or a flat fee per type of project basis. So that gives you at least a general feel for the range of fees and the amounts and the way that they are imposed in a number of jurisdictions surrounding Santa Barbara. What I want to do next is just give you a feel for the order of magnitude of what a fee system in the city of Santa Barbara might generate. Of course, that depends entirely on the specifics of what kinds of public services you might want to fund, how you go about computing the prorata share of facility costs that would be imposed in the way of fees, and how much development takes place in the city. But in order to give you at least a feel for what a fee system might generate, we've assumed an average annual rate of growth based on what the planning staff tells us would be allowable under the remaining years of Measure E. We've picked several categories of fees that are typical of the communities that surround you and the fee amounts that go with them, and then multiplied it out. In terms of the rate of growth on an annual basis, what we've assumed is about 100 market-rate condominiums per year and about 86,000 square feet of commercial development, and that's what the math is based on. We've assumed, for sake of discussion, just these four categories of fees. There could be more, there could be less, and these particular fee amounts, which are sort of in the middle of the range of the jurisdictions around you that have these kinds of fees, they're not necessarily all at the top of the range of fees, though they could be, depending on how well justified the costs might be here in Santa Barbara. But again, this is just to provide an illustration. And on the next slide, what we've done is taken the amount of growth, on the one hand, on an annual basis, and the amount of development fees, and multiplied it out for a typical year. And what it means is about $1 million over a year, or about $5.7 million over five years. The thing that I think is important about this is that if you think about the scale of capital needs that the city has, this doesn't produce a lot of money. And it comes in lumpy ways because of the nature of development cycles. This is a particular moment in the economic cycle where development activity is not taking place to the same degree that it was two or three or four years ago. And on the one hand, you don't have arguably the same level of impact as a result of that slowing of development activity, but by the same token, if you're the finance director who's trying to save up enough money from each of these individual projects to fund some infrastructure improvement, you're not getting as much collected on an annual basis as you need in order to put those systems in place. Finally, with regard to development fees, I just want to highlight a couple of additional cautions in thinking about going forward with them. First, I think they are a useful component of an overall infrastructure financing strategy, but as you can see from the illustrations that I was just showing you, they really don't, are unlikely to produce a significant amount of money that would be required to keep up with the kinds of needs that the city probably has going forward. Nonetheless, they may be a useful component of an overall strategy. The process for establishing fees can be time-consuming. The development community is hardly indifferent about this subject and is often an active participant in the process, and even more often, a vigorous opponent to the process because every dollar, from their perspective at least, every dollar of development fees that they have to pay is a dollar of profit to them less. On the other hand, I think the pervasiveness of development fee systems around the state of California at this time in our history means that there's a certain leveling of this issue in various development markets, and developers, generally speaking, are pretty used to these fees being in place, but are definitely interested in the scale and amount of those fees, and as I said earlier, the point in the development process in which they are imposed. But the process of developing the fee system is one that is often contentious, and so you just need to be prepared for that. As I said a moment ago, the other issue, of course, is that the development fees rise and fall with development cycles, and there are issues that then get raised about whether the revenue is there in ways that are predictable enough to really accomplish the purpose of putting them in place in the first, setting them up in the first place. And in down markets, like we are experiencing now, there is often a vigorous effort, and the Building Industry Association around the state, generally speaking, has been very active on this note recently, trying to get cities and counties to reduce their fees as a way of trying to help the development market recover from the difficulties that they are having, or at least in part. So the up and down cycles of the development market definitely play a role here. Then the final point was the one I tried to make with the number illustration, that in communities with relatively modest amounts of new development, the actual dollar amounts that come out of a fee system may not amount to a significant amount for actually trying to make the kinds of improvements that you may want to make. But again, that's all a function of the range of fees or the range of facilities that you impose the fees on, the specific dollar amounts that you find are justifiable to impose, and the scale of development that takes place. Mr. Chairman, I think I'd like to pause there before going on to the other infrastructure financing techniques and see if you want to have some discussion about this part of the presentation first, and then I can finish up however you'd like to proceed.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. I think there probably is some questions from the Planning Commission at this point. Anybody have any questions? There we go. Mr. Thompson, why don't I start with you?
Okay, thank you. Mine's probably pretty simple. You, on one of your slides on park fees, said that Orca, I think it was, imposes fees for Quimby's. What's a Quimby?
Oh, the Quimby Act allow, it's in the subdivision map context. The Quimby Act allows you to impose park acquisition fees on, first, you have to adopt, there's a procedure that you have to go through to adopt a service standard of so many acres of parkland per thousand population. And then to, then through the Subdivision Map Act, you either require developers to provide that acreage of park space or pay a fee to the city in lieu of that, which then goes into a fund which, over time, assists the city in acquiring enough park space. And the Quimby fees are, you know, would be imposed no matter what kind of subdivision it is, whether it's a single-family subdivision like in Orca, or it was a condominium project in the heart of downtown Santa Barbara.
Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Myers. My question is also about parks. So if the, in your preliminary, you said that the fees cannot be used to increase a level of service, but wouldn't buying new parkland be increasing a level of service? And it's still okay to do it that way?
Yeah, the question is, it's like the Quimby fee, is what is, the level of service is how many acres of parkland, or how many square feet of what types of recreational facilities are typically provided in the community? And so to the extent that you have already developed a level of service standards for these things, you would tend to use those going forward in time. It's not that you can't change the level of service, but if you change the level of service to, for example, require more acreage of park space per thousand population than you have historically had, or more square feet of recreation facilities, or more police facilities per thousand population, or whatever the metric is, you just have to be very careful in doing the math underlying the fee, that you are essentially not charging developers for the higher level of service, but only their prorata share of what the basic level of service has been. And then you would have to use other funds in order to help bring the citywide standard up to the new level.
And then a second question. A lot of the fees are triggered by, say, a dwelling unit or a room in a hotel, and I'm presuming that's all new construction?
Yes.
It wouldn't affect something that's remodeling or renovating in some way?
Well, that depends on your regulatory design. It is very often the case that in the case of a remodeled facility, that, for example, whatever traffic might have been associated with the prior use that's being removed might be credited against the new use, depending on whether it's higher or lower. In school fees, for example, which are imposed, you know, by school districts, not by cities and counties, though you collect them on their behalf very often, it is typically the case in school fees that if a remodeling is taking place, that the fee is only imposed on the net new space above and beyond what was there to begin with, on the theory that it's only the net new space that is producing new impact for which mitigation might be required. So there are different ways to handle changes of use and remodels, but you have pretty wide latitude in how you do it in the way that seems appropriate to your jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Ms. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for being here to help us explore ignorance. So I need to explore mine a little bit right now. Now, I am ignorant about Melrose. Is this somewhere?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, Melrose falls into the second half of the presentation, if you want me to get into it. It is a property tax-based requirement. Melrose taxes are a form of special tax in which the, that are essentially paid by homeowners in new subdivisions to help pay for the public services involved in their subdivision, but it's imposed by adding on to the property tax so that the new homeowners pay for it, not the developer, which is one of the reasons why the developers like that approach.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Santa Barbara, as you know, is working on an inclusionary in lieu fee at this point, and had one 12 years ago, something like that. It seemed like, and I've been witnessing this during that dozen years, it seemed like as the opportunity to get fees came, we had eliminated the fee because of the last recession. So we're sort of getting, we're out of sync.
Right.
I'm worried about that we've lost the rhythm there of having the fee match the economic cycle. Are there communities that attempt to do that, to have the fee vary with economic cycle, so that when in good times, the fee is charged, and in bad times, the fee is either reduced or not charged?
I'm not.
I heard you say that people were varying fees.
Yes.
I didn't know that anybody was thinking that far ahead in synchronizing.
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of a jurisdiction that had I'm not aware, I'm not aware of a jurisdiction that has in their formal regulations a procedure for adjusting the fees based on the real estate cycle. And I think there are pretty good reasons for that because one part of the real estate market may be having difficulty and others not, and so it's a little hard to know whether you do it for office buildings or residential, if they're sort of out of sync with each other. But as I was saying in my cautions about development fee systems, it is very often the case, and that was why I mentioned the Building Industry Association's statewide effort at the moment, that during difficult economic times, the development community often comes to local government and says, look, this is a time at which you should consider reducing your fees, or waiving them, or eliminating them, or changing the way that you impose them in order to allow us to go forward and do other things that you want the development community to do, but for which these fees are an extra burden at a particularly difficult time. So to the extent that the fees get adjusted during down cycles, it is usually more informal sort of lobbying of decision-makers that tends to cause that to happen, at least in my experience. I'm not aware of any formalized process that a jurisdiction has for doing that. But the, but I think your illustration of the in-lu fees being out of sync with the market is, is in line with one of the cautions that I was raising about the need to be aware of that in the, in the course of designing the fee system, because it is a sure thing, I would suggest, that there will be up and down cycles at various points. And it is one of the, one of the reasons why development fees, they're just not a very stable source of funding for that reason.
Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions. The first one is, in this developer, development fee approach, it's clearly a marginal cost approach, and when you're going to talk about the other long-term financing things, that's more of an average cost approach over a particular area or zone of benefit, or whatever you want to call it. In Santa Barbara, in a community that is 90% built out, which approach is better suited to us as we go forward and try to tackle these almost intractable problems of paying for infrastructure?
Mm-hmm. What the Commissioner is pointing out is a very important distinction in terms of average cost versus marginal or incremental cost. It is very often the situation where you get to a point where you have a very lumpy investment that needs to be made because the service system has essentially been used up, and one more increment of growth pushes you over some fundamental line where rather than just sort of adding a turn lane to a street, you have to do something much more dramatic. And, and that's the difference between, roughly, the difference between the marginal or incremental cost approach and the average cost approach in which you just assume that for all development, everybody pays an average increment of fee to cover an average type of expansion, which may or may not be appropriate given the use of the system. But you're quite right that the, that the sort of big-ticket items that are often funded in the city's capital budget, like the new police headquarters, are something that you only do once every generation or so. And it is very difficult to save up enough on a kind of marginal cost basis in order to pool enough money over time to have that ready for when you need it. And so for those very large, kind of lumpy investments, as economists tend to refer to them, that's when you really tend to focus more on long-term debt financing, because the scale of the investment is such that you really need a different order of magnitude of funding in order to put the measure in place. And it is, it would be very unlikely that you, particularly in a town that approves only a relatively modest amount of new development every year, that you would be able to collect enough fee through, enough funding through development fees to save up enough in any timely way to pay for something like that, or on the other side, to impose a fee at a scale that would get you the funding that you need and still be feasible in the context of average projects. And so the very large, lumpy investments tend to require a different form of financing. Thank you.
Do you have another one?
Yes, and this one relates to staff as much as it does to our speaker. This is supposed to be, this is part of a piece related to the Plan Santa Barbara approach, and I'm curious, how specifically does this relate to that exercise? It's obviously, it obviously contains some implementation strategies, because financing and fee approaches are what makes the world go round when it comes to making public improvements. Where do we put this? If we decide that there's a program that's worthy of following through, where does it go and how does it fit into the Plan Santa Barbara piece?
Chair Myers and Commissioner Justice, I think that's a very good question, and I think that's for us to have a conversation with you about how we want to move forward. I think what council wanted to do is they wanted to jumpstart the conversation, which is why we did this analysis at this point. And the timing is really good for where we are in Plan Santa Barbara. You're going to have a two-day work session in early September forwarding recommendations to the city council. And to implement or develop impact fees will require additional analysis and work, doing the NEXUS study and coming up with some of those key questions that Mr. Silverman has kind of outlined that we'd have to answer. What do we want to apply it to? What do we want to try to fund? And all those sorts of things that I think if the Planning Commission wants to continue to pursue this idea in a serious manner, one recommendation you might make to the city council is to begin those analysis and studies, those NEXUS studies and such, and be doing that while the environmental impact report is being done by Plan Santa Barbara. So then when it all comes back to you, you're able to kind of make some comprehensive decisions with the general plan process.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first series of questions is relating to the sheet that you have, page 11, on parking fees. And I'm not sure if I'm reading your notes correctly. It sounds like City of Ventura charges a fee of $2,899 for each parking space in a project, whereas Moore Park pays you $3,000 to not put one in, or am I reading this backwards?
I'm not entirely sure. I'd have to double-check that for you.
If we took the Moore Park approach, we could probably fund the city by eliminating parking.[1049.42][1049.42](Laughter). Second question, and it relates just to that category. If developers pay an in-lu fee for reduced parking, where then does that money get spent? Do you spend it on narrowing roads, putting in bike lanes, doing something that's related to automobiles? I mean, it can't go to be building a dam or some other unrelated.
Exactly. Yeah, no, that would be up to your individual program design about how you would propose to spend it. But I, but you're quite right, as I was trying to emphasize at the beginning, that you can't impose the fee for one thing and then spend it on something else. So, but, but within the general category of traffic impact mitigation, obviously there are a variety of strategies that fall under that heading, and therefore you would have a fair amount of latitude about how you would end up spending those fee revenues in order to accomplish the general objective.
And if you were trying to fund an infrastructure project such as, you know, recapture of rainwater, doing something different with the storm drain system, that seems like that's an impact caused not only by new development, but all existing. So would that go more under an average cost-type basis if you did it that way?
Yes, I mean, that's, that's an instance in which, to the extent that new development was being built in a way that contributes to the stormwater being put into a particular drainage basin, you might impose a development impact fee for their pro-rata share of the contribution to that problem. But you would have to have an entirely different funding source to account for the fact that up till that point in time, you hadn't spent the money to solve the problem based on the development that had been approved in previous years.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a quick question. As a, in regard to, say, high fire danger areas and trying to support the, the infrastructure in a fire, high fire danger area, all of, any development fee that would go into a fire fee would be for, for equipment and infrastructure only. In other words, you couldn't, in a high emergency area, fund additional personnel or, or maybe possibly more personnel on a regular basis that would go out and implement, you know, brush reduction and stuff like that policies throughout an area?
My general impression is no, but I'm, I don't, I haven't myself worked on a fire fee program, so I can't say that I've looked specifically at that. But my general understanding is that the development impact fees need to go into equipment and, and buildings primarily and not into personnel. But I don't know enough about the history of the fire fee that applies in Santa Barbara County, for example, to know exactly what they spend it on. So it could be that because that fee has been in place for a long time and predates the mitigation fee act, that they do things a little differently. I'm not entirely sure.
Okay.
And Chair Myers, in that regard, I'd remind you that we adopted an assessment fee in the city. The voters in the high-fire areas of the city assessed themselves just a couple of years ago to fund those types of programs, which include brush clearance programs and other things like that. But again, that was clear because it was an assessment fee, so it was only assessed on those who were going to get the benefit of the improvements from them.
That's an important distinction. Thanks for raising that, Paul, because assessment district financing is definitely suitable for both facilities and operation and maintenance, which may, which is one of its distinct advantages, is that it's clear that it can be used for both. Whereas general obligation bonds and certain other kinds of, you know, even large-scale debt financing can't be used for operation and maintenance, assessment district financing definitely can and often is. You know, whether it's business improvement districts, you know, in order to maintain the sidewalks and so forth in a downtown area, or to do things like, to pay for brush clearance and, and other measures.
Okay, great. Well, let's, I'm not sure how much the rest of the commission wants to hear about these other things, but we are in a little bit of a tight schedule, and I'm wondering, can you, can you go through this in a conclusionary fashion, or do you want to? I understand we have someone who wants to speak to this, and I'm trying to get to you as soon as possible, so.
Well, I think, just, in the interest of time, I think just very briefly, I would, I would say that there are several different kinds of long-term debt financing that, that are available, some of which have been used in the city of Santa Barbara. But generally speaking, they all require a dedicated revenue stream. They, for the most part, focus also on facilities and not so much on operations and services. But their advantage is that they allow you to get the scale of revenue that's necessary for a very expensive infrastructure system. And they include such things as revenue bonds and general obligation bonds or certificates of participation. There are some fairly exotic permutations of those programs, and I think the infrastructure financing task force is going to be evaluating the degree to which various kinds of debt financing may be appropriate for Santa Barbara. Paul was kind enough to mention assessment districts. As you can see in the materials, there are a wide, wide range of those that have been adopted since the early 20th century that are used for a variety of different things, some for very specific purposes. But by and large, they are, they are, what sets them apart, as Paul was indicating, is that they focus on a particular area that is receiving some unusual benefit for which a, an assessment is appropriate, particular to that area being served, and in direct proportion to the benefit received. Then there are a variety of special taxes, like your sales tax override that you're familiar with, that are often used from time to time, and there are, there are various applications of that that may be suitable as part of the overall financing program that the infrastructure task force is looking at.
Well, Mr. Silverman, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Certainly something that we obviously need to spend a lot more time in, but it was a great overview, and I'm sure you're looking for a well-deserved drink of water at this point. Let me open up the public comment period for this. We have one speaker, Jerry Bunin, for the Home Builders Association. Mr. Bunin?
Jerry Bunin, Government Affairs Director for the Home Builders Association. I love that word, extractions? Exactions. It's not the word we use when we talk about it. And I want you to know that when you, when you praise someone who's given a report on development impact fees and you represent the building community, I don't want his reputation to go down, but I thought that was a great report he gave you.[1473.13][1473.13](Laughter). I'm going to tell you what we do on, on impact fee studies. We try to hire a consultant, and we go through, we go through them to look for assurance that we're being charged for our actual impacts. And I will assure you that we always find things that we are not going beyond what we did. It's always looking for very creative ways to make us fix existing problems. But we look for Nolan and Dolan, nexus and proportionality. We also look for the fact that the AV 1600 law, if you read it, appears to say that they should be charged at certificate of occupancy. But again, government has gone through a number of creative approaches to charge us at building permit, not suggesting you would, including sue us. This is my favorite response we've heard from government. As he said it several times, we can't fix your $100 million or $145 million shortfall. One of the things I've seen happen with great frequency on impact fees is that the rate we pay them does not keep up with the cost of the project. So that you're kind of, the finish line gets further and further away from your revenue source. And, you know, one of the ways we look at this, we try to take a very progressive look and under the theory that we want the people who are buying our homes to actually be happy where they're living, so that there's an advantage in making sure that they have infrastructure. But in terms of trying to meet the need, the cost of the project is going further away while your pot of money is growing. So it hasn't worked very well. You raised the point about people will stand up here and tell you it's going to kill the project. I'm going to try and tell you what I think is the truth, is that impact fees, like the inclusion housing fee, which you have actually, you have the largest inclusionary in lieu fee on the central coast. It's almost $300,000 per affordable unit, so we're paying you $450,000 for a 10-unit project. They impact the cost of construction. No doubt about it. The market sets the price. The cost of construction tells us what we can build, when we can build, if we can build. So they do have an impact on the market, but they don't set the cost. I want to put something he told you in a different context. You got 37,000 homes, you're adding over the last 20 years as your staff is, you always have a good staff, so it lowers their reputation too, 100 a year. Last year, you had 45 new units. This year, you're on pace at the same time for half of that. So you'd have about 20, 25 units this year. I want to just add two more things. I brought you a present. I would suggest in your studies that you actually invite the city of Santa Maria to send a representative down here. Nobody does it better. I hate to praise them, they do a really good job on this. They recently switched from a per-unit cost to a per-square-foot cost. We supported it 100%. It works really good in terms of affordability by design. Your impact goes up if you're building a larger home than if you're building a smaller home. Two bedrooms versus four, it's a no-brainer. They also had a charge that they put on remodeling. I think it was over 500 square feet, because in the world that they were living in and we're all living in, it was oftentimes cheaper to build an extra bedroom than to buy a new home. So I would suggest that you talk to them. They're really good people, we like them a lot, even though they make us pay a lot of money. And the last thing I would, I would tell you, before I give you my present, is I always find it interesting when I look and someone tries to convince me that an aquatic center is a need. An aquatic center is a wish, and that is where this all gets kind of mixed up. You have to figure out what, what do you really want out of this? Roads, yeah, no-brainer. We have water problems, I don't know if you have water problems here, I'm sure you do, everybody does, but it's a question of what's really important. I do think Mr. Silverman gave you a great report. I brought you something, I brought you only one copy because we're, we're running out, and I'm sure that Liz can separate it. We've done an impact fee survey twice on San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara County. It's a total moving target. We did one in '01, and this one's in '05. It's just useful to look at, to see what people charge, and I believe Mr. Silverman said everyone does it different. You'll go through that, and you'll find that those pages have, each page has 50 different footnotes, because they're doing it different than everyone else. So in any case, we probably won't do anything really, like you say, we'd like to be an enemy. We'll probably be an observer and a watchdog. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this particular item? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for any further comments. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have really, well, comment is a very thorough and informative briefing. Thank you for... Thank you for all that information. It's like, we'll have to digest that before we do anything with it. But I have a couple of questions for staff. Although the fee menu that we already have doesn't generally go towards stuff, which is the focus of this briefing, we do have development process fees, and it seems like we get a briefing every year, and the last time we were trying to work our way up to where we recovered 30%. Is that normal, and why wouldn't we try to recover up to 100%, thereby freeing up more general fund money for stuff?
Chair Myers and Commissioner Thompson, it's a good question. It's something we've been looking at with our planning fees in particular over the last seven years, and really ramping them up. On the building and safety side, plan check fees, we're at full-cost recovery, essentially, which is where most building departments are. And so there, we're pretty much in line. Where we weren't in line, especially seven years ago, was on our planning fees and what we charge for people to come through the planning process. We were at a recovery rate of about 7% to 8%. I mean, extremely low. And so we've been ramping them up annually as part of our budget process, with anywhere from 10% to 50% fee increases on an annual basis on our planning fees. And we're heading more towards about a 50% recovery on the planning fees. The difficulty, jurisdictions do it differently. Many jurisdictions are on a full-cost recovery. It might be on a deposit system, and then you just keep billing for staff time. We haven't chosen to go that way in the city of Santa Barbara, and one of the reasons is because we have a very thorough planning process. We have a more thorough planning process than I think most jurisdictions do. And so it takes time for a developer's project to get through the system. We do a lot of analysis on projects, down to very small projects, that in many other jurisdictions are, you know, non-discretionary, just administratively approved. And so there's just kind of this balance between how much do we charge on the planning process and how much community value is there from our strict planning process. And we're also at a point now, just on a cost basis, that our fees are towards the upper end compared to other jurisdictions of planning fees. I think if we went to a full-cost recovery, we would be extremely high compared to other jurisdictions from a planning fee standpoint. So it's just, it's a policy question we continue to have with council. We're evaluating it every year as part of the budget. We're still in a mode of increasing our planning fees on an annual basis, and I don't know where that happy medium is, but we continue to look at it.
Okay, and one follow-up question on that. With all the different types of fees that the jurisdictions around us charge, do we not charge similar fees because of a strategic decision on the part of the city at some point in the past, or is it just that we have not felt the need before, and now we're starting to look around, starting to feel the need?
Commissioner Thompson, that, you know, I have a beholder to some extent. I think many people will say historically, we did not choose to charge development fees, again, because we have a rigorous design review process and planning review process. And so that was kind of the carrot-and-stick approach, is that, you know, our review process is really tough, but we don't charge the impact fees. And so the trade-off, you know, is kind of a fair trade-off, because really what we want as a community was quality design. And I think that's what people are reevaluating now, is, you know, we want quality design, but maybe we should be getting some of these impact fees as well, even though, I agree with Mr. Silver, and their dollar amount isn't huge, but, you know, they'd be another trick in our toolbox to get at it.
And I would also follow that with, that we, in a few instances in the past, we have charged development fees. When we did major infrastructure improvements in outer state street area in the early 80s, we charged a fee there. We partially offset the cost of the two bridges, La Cumbre and Los Vasitas Bridges, through us a separate fee that covered both the outer state street area and a broader area. And then we actually, for a period of time, had a downtown fee to do the improvements that you see along Correo Street, and from the freeway into downtown, and some other related things. And the city chipped in money, developers chipped in money, and together those moved forward. So when we've seen something that we could really clearly look at that was a broader perspective than fixing one intersection due to a particular development, then that's where we've gone after a broader program.
Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair Myers. Three items. One is that, as Ms. Hubbell said and other commissioners noted, we had some fees that we had, and then they kind of went away, and every so often I'll hear someone say, "Well, what happened to that money we used to have?" Well, we used it, okay, we used it. And so I'm suggesting that when and if we do a similar fee structure, that, and maybe this was done, but that it be suspended rather than sunsetted, that we suspend it for a two-year, five-year period, set a time certain for it to be reevaluated, but to not just have it gone, you know, because it's a lot of work to set it up again. So I would suggest suspension rather than sunsets, should we go forward in this direction. Secondly, about the expense of our planning process, we do have an expensive planning process, but there's a cheap planning process and an expensive one, and you get what you pay for, especially in Santa Barbara, in terms of land value and potential profit on what the developer is going to be getting for that planning process. Yes, you're spending the money to develop your project, but so did everyone else, and that's why the city is as desirable as it is. So I wouldn't have the city be sheepish in the expense of its planning process. Our fees are kind of low. It would be nice to see a 50% cost recovery. Even more, I think San Luis Obispo has 100% as their goal, so don't be sheepish about considering more planning fees. And thirdly, and this is the one that I'd like to leave for us to, if we set something in action today, of the kinds of fees that have been outlined here, I think one of the most immediate ones is a need for a park, a park fee, a park, a development fee for support of our parks. And I have time and again read an EIR where the impact on parks is nothing because our standards or lack of standards say we have enough park space, even if that park space is miles away from where a particular development is going in. And I'm not sure what needs to happen first, but I'm going to guess that the first thing that has to happen is the city needs to establish and adopt its park standards, so that we know exactly how much parkland is considered to be our level of service, and then identify places that don't have parks. Intuitively, it feels like the upper state street area and the west side have a population that are currently underserved in terms of parks. And I would suggest that we set in motion an adoption of standards, followed by calculating a nexus and proportionality, and look at some fees. The report projected a $900 fee per unit, but I see in the other cities, it's $1,000 to $9,000 per unit for park fees. And so that would be, I think we might be starting too low and could look at something a tiny bit higher. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last question to Mr. Silver. How often have you seen agencies utilize kind of different fee structures to not only mitigate or respond to infrastructure needs, but also articulate policy? For example, if the city wants to encourage smaller dwelling unit sizes in condominiums versus larger dwelling unit sizes in condominiums, using a different rate structure to approach that type of a public policy issue? Or is it strictly focused on capital improvements? Is there another side to this?
Again, because of the requirements of the Mitigation Fee Act, I think it might be difficult to use pricing as a mechanism for furthering particular public policies, to the extent that it's done through a development fee. Now, you might have, you have a whole range of other taxation capabilities in which you can choose to either waive or reduce taxes, or in redevelopment agency or redevelopment project areas, use other financial mechanisms at your disposal in order to further policies that you want to promote. So you have the ability to use pricing as a way of influencing policy outcomes, but I think it is, my sense is that it's fairly awkward to do it with development fees. With the possible exception of the question that was asked about that parking charge, which I, although we had it on the list, I'm personally not that familiar with, and it may bear looking at whether, you know, that parking reduction, which is a pricing mechanism to accomplish that objective, is something that could be done. But my general impression is that development fees might not be the right way to use pricing as an incentive.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think Commissioner Justice took the question that I was going to put forward, trying to find some way of having an incentive-based system to reward the kind of behavior we're looking for planning-wise, and charge more for the type projects that we're not looking to see so much of. But I think you answered that fairly well. I think related to that, is there a way that we can charge more for modifications, things that have impacts, you know, to either infrastructure, to the public, or to the parks, or something like that? Can we charge more fees when there really is something that we're having to give up on in this development process?
Chair Myers and Commissioner Bartlet, you know, that's hard to give you a definitive answer, because then you need to be making judgment calls about which modification application is the bad modification application and which one kind of makes sense. I think you, as the commission, understand that modifications come in all different shapes and sizes. And I also question whether a fee in that regard, whether it be $500 or $1,500 or $2,500, really will have a financial impact on the decision-making process of the developer about whether to go for it or not, unless you got to some such outrageous exorbitant planning fee that just, I don't think would be tenable.
Okay, thanks.
You know, I really appreciate the product that our discretionary planning process has given us, but when we get into a time like now, when development is dropping off because of slow economic times, and we see projects that have come before us that aren't getting developed because they're just not getting put forward, it begs the question on whether or not some of our discretionary process should become a little bit more administrative, and maybe fees were appropriately applied, should pay for some of the infrastructure problems, financial problems we're having. So I, you know, it's sort of a hard thing to get to, but I think that we, you know, the flexibility that Commissioner White was talking about, I think deserves a lot of looking at, and how we can really manage the, both of these things optimally during good and bad times. I think you get closer to a 50% or an 80% recovery if the discretionary process goes down a little bit. So, you know, I don't know. It certainly is a vibrant discussion, and I look forward to more of it, and thank you very much for an excellent presentation. Thank you. So let's take that, take us to our next item, which is a concept review. No formal action will be taken on this today. It's the application of Trish Allen and Susan Elidge Planning and Permitting Services, agent for Orient Express Hotels, Trains and Cruises, Elencanto Hotel and Garden Villas at 1900 Lawson Road. Kathleen Kennedy is our case planner. I'm sorry. What did I say? Lawson. Yeah. I don't know forever. Yeah, I know, I know that.
Good afternoon, Chair Myers and commissioners. We're here before you today to discuss the revised master plan for the Elencanto Hotel. You may recall, in June, we had a planning commission lunch meeting. I wanted to bring you up to date on the revised master plan and the fact that the applicant has decided to divide it into two phases. And at that point, you suggested we come back with a concept review, public hearing, so we can bring the whole neighborhood and the commission up to date on what's happened at the hotel. This staff presentation will be brief. I'm just going to go over briefly the master plan approval from 2004 and a few subsequent approvals since then, bring you up to date, and then the applicant will discuss the revised master plan. Here's a vicinity map. In the black area is the project site. This is an aerial photograph from 2004. This is the project site at the time of the approval. You'll see the tennis court that's been removed, the parking area here, the swimming pool down below, and the parking area, which is similar to what's there today in this area. Here's a slide showing the approved plan that was approved in 2004. Some changes to the swimming pool, and I'll go through the list of approvals. This is an aerial photograph I found. This was one that was provided by the agent back in 2004. This is a composite view of what the project would look like if it had proceeded as was approved in 2004. At that time, the main building was approved to be expanded 2,251 square feet and a complete remodel. Five new cottages were approved, resulting in nine new rooms, for a total of 97 rooms on site. The relocation of three historic cottages, the exterior alteration of four of the cottages, interior renovation of all existing cottages, the reconfiguration of the two parking areas, removal of the tennis court, and a number of other site improvements. You may recall there was an appeal filed at that time regarding the sidewalk requirement, concern from the neighbors about narrowing Alvarado Place. The project was brought back to you, there was much discussion, and it was determined that the sidewalk would no longer be required. There have been a few substantial conformance determinations made since 2004. There was a planning commission lunch meeting to discuss an increase in the basement of the new main building, and that was approved. The square footage for that was taken, as you may recall, from two cottages, number 27 and 28. They were proposed new cottages, so in effect, those are no longer valid, and that'll be included in the new package from the applicant. We had another substantial conformance determination, request to increase the height of the main building two feet. Again, this was discussed by the planning commission, and it was approved. There was also a request to do some additional grading. During the grading of the main building, the applicant requested to be able to do the grading for the pool and fitness center ahead of actually getting approval for the fitness center, and we discussed that as well, and that was approved as well. A couple more substantial conformance requests for the demolition, reconstruction of Cottage Four. Again, I'm just going through these quickly. Another modification request for Cottage 11. You may recall, we discussed that as well. The modification was sent to the staff hearing officer at the time to review that, and that was approved. Cottage 12, also it was determined that this project would be, or building would be demolished and then reconstructed, and that was approved. In 2003, a Historic Structure Sites Report was prepared, that was accepted by the HLC. Each time the applicant has come forward with a new plan to go forward with all the exterior changes to all the cottages on site, a letter addendum report was required to be submitted and accepted by HLC. I believe we've had about 18 reports that we've required them to do so far, as well as numerous Historic Landmarks Commission approvals and reviews. The revised master plan that we're reviewing now consists of two phases. One is the central plant, and phase two would consist of the swimming pool with the fitness center below, the two new cottages, 27 and 28, a new surface parking lot with operations facility in the northwest corner, and a new Mission Village area with parking garage below in the northeast corner. That concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant will go into more detail about the revised plan.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for staff, the commission? Ms. Allen, would you like to proceed? Ms. Allen, would you like to proceed? Okay. Okay. Oh, Mr. Bartlett?
I just wanted to ask if we had any draft minutes yet from HLC?
Actually, I do have a copy, I have just one copy of draft minutes. I could read them for you if you'd like. This was related to the northwest corner parking area.
Okay.
And this was from the meeting of just, I think, last week. It was a motion to continue indefinitely to the Planning Commission, and the comments are followed, follows, "Lower the parking at the beginning of the ramp by several feet." We're talking about that parking area in the northwest corner. I can actually probably get a slide. Actually, yeah, it's fine.
Would you repeat that, please?
Trish Allen's pointing to that since we're having her slide up there, the area that we're talking about in the northwest corner, parking area. Comment was to lower the parking at the beginning of the ramp by several feet, continue with a reasonable slope for drainage, and end it with at least a five-foot-high wall at the lowest end to reduce headlights shining onto Alvarado Place from the parking lot. The commission would not object to having an open parking at this site. A 60-foot-long screen wall would be adequate to mitigate the impact of automobiles. The break in the walls with skylights is acceptable. An increase in lighting should not be included. The noise produced by the valet parking should be reduced as much as possible. A plaster wall in lieu of sandstone would be more appropriate and would save money, which could then be redirected to lowering the parking. Keep intact as many pruned eucalyptus trees as possible on the north side of the property. Plant canopy trees around the perimeter of the property, in particular on Alvarado Place, which is to the left. I'd like to also say that, so it was continued indefinitely to the Planning Commission, the other areas that the applicant will be speaking about, the Mission Village and the swimming pool, have also received positive comments, so they won't be returning to HLC prior to coming to your commission.
I see. Is there a member of HLC here that wants to speak specifically as HLC's voice? It's here. Why don't you step up and do that now?
Robert Adams, landscape architect on HLC. We've been looking at this project, well, for a long time, me personally, for a couple years. And we have been working with this project over numerous meetings. The concern we have is about the former tennis court in the northwest corner that's going to be turned into valet parking, is that that be softened and the impact minimized. And we're working with the applicant, and so far, so good. It's not perfect yet, but they're, but they're working with us and so far, listening to us. There's also other areas we've been looking at, which they will explain, but the, some of the architecture in the pool areas look pretty good. But again, this has been a long process over many, many meetings, and it's still a work in progress. And so I would just leave it at that. And I agree with the draft minutes that were mentioned by staff, but really, we want the landscaping to really soften that northwest corner, which was a key area. So I'll just leave it at that, and I'll stay around unless you have questions.
Okay, great. And thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good afternoon. My name is James Jones, and I represent ownership, which is Orient Express Hotels, Trains and Cruises for Ellen Canto. I'm here to reiterate, I believe, what was presented back in 2004 during the acquisition process, where Orient Express is committed to deliver what they at that time saw as a five-star potential property to enhance Santa Barbara. As what was the previous owner's entitlement, which was adopted by Orient Express Hotel, was very limited in scope of overall improvements to the property. Based on that, Orient Express came in and looked at increase of scope to the site to give a better delivery for what they thought met their program. That being said, since that time, there has been numerous meetings, staff, HLC, as we tried to define the program and refine that scope. Also, what has happened naturally, as the scope has increased, that during the construction process, certainly with the renovation of historical site, the budget, also in suit, follows that increase to the order of about 400% from that of the original expectations back in 2004. However, as I just said, I'm here to reiterate Orient Express's commitment to deliver a icon back to the city of Santa Barbara. I moved here back June of 2005, not familiar with Santa Barbara in the process, and very quickly surrounded myself with local professionals who are very well-respected within the community, or in the case of Henry Linney, respected in Mexico. But we have, but, but some of, some of the project team that I'm very proud to have on board, Alexandra Cole, who is our architectural historian, we have Katie O'Reilly Rogers, who is our landscape architect, we have John Maloney, electrical engineer, Trish Allen, who represents our permitting, planning, processing. And I learned very quickly that not only was there a specific process in order to develop and reopen this hotel, but more importantly, respect the significance of the site. Now, Orient Express's methodology, just as they maintain the hotel names of which they operate, they're, as the flagship Hotel Chipriani in Venice and other hotel writs, et cetera, carry their individual names, that's how they respect the local communities. Now, also, what we found was a very key factor in this, was that to enhance but maintain things of architecture charm, also protect and preserve the landscaping with all the exotic planting gardens, also is a significant place for weddings. The Arbor and the Lily Pond hosted many weddings throughout the term of its operation. Also, there was generations of families who would come and stay there for various events, vacations, et cetera, that have all voiced tremendous concerns of wanting to come back and continue that throughout their family entertainment time. Also, it's very important to being good neighbors, respecting the Riviera community environment. And then also, as we are looking at preserving historical site in addition to the renovation process, it is reuse of a lot of construction materials, which we're doing, the tiles, the brick, the wood siding, the window restorations, et cetera. So it's a very significant element for us to maintain its look from that of the previous operations. Also during my term here, it's very important for neighborhood outreach, letting people know what's going on. Our primary conduit of outreach was through the Riviera Homeowners Association Board. We did also host some open house events where we toured through some model rooms that we have in place right now to kind of show a finished product look there for the site. Also sending corporate letters and updates, and that's all in addition to the public notices that are being sent out by city and staff. What we're here today to talk about, as Kathleen described, was the phasing, if you will. Now, the central plant is a very significant part of the property because it runs the entire facility. We, we are very grateful for the support that we've been receiving all along the way in guidance with working with staff and the various governing committees. When we approached staff for some special consideration in breaking out a phasing program, the logistics behind that was to separate the central plant to help expedite 22 of the buildings that are currently under construction. That way, we could bring the buildings through their completion with bringing services and conditioning the spaces so that we can further the inspections toward approvals. Also, it would help us achieve a better program to accelerate an opening date. As Kathleen mentioned, June 5th, you were presented with that central plant request, and that there are many reasons that Trish will get into in detail of why the central plant is of such importance to us and at this time. I just want to make a note that the central plant system that is being installed on the property is a tremendous value in engineering savings, acoustics, also it supports a lot of our life safety systems throughout the entire property itself. Specifically, life safety is a key element for, for Orient Express. Not only, you know, are they focused on guest comfort, but they're also very focused on life safety. So as we're looking for this special consideration to look at a central plant and then in turn bring on the other phases of the property, we're looking for a timely reopening for many reasons. As I mentioned, we want to reopen a very significant hotel here in Santa Barbara. We want to bring back a lot of employees that we had to release during the time of construction. Also, we want to make more jobs available back into the local community. We want to reopen a international resort destination through the Orient Express network system, where they have properties in 25 countries. We also, some of the new programs are to enhance and bring in corporate Fortune 500 companies, both domestic and international, for corporate meeting places and events and functions. Also, open a restaurant and bar, which will not only provide the phenomenal views that are experienced from the hotel, but also support a lot of the local farmers, fishermen, and wineries by purchasing their goods for the operations. So Orient Express is here today, you know, asking, as we did with staff, for some consideration for a phasing of the project, but our goal is very succinct in getting a very timely reopening of this site, and we are very grateful for the support we've been getting today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
How much time did it leave me?
You have about 35 seconds.
Thank you, I'm used to that. I'm used to talking very quickly. Again, thank you for this opportunity to provide the commission with, with an update on the project, and I'm glad that all of you were able to make the site visit this Tuesday. I think that you see how busy the site is and, and understand the critical need to get the central plant online. I'm going to give a very brief overview of the components of the revised plan, but first, before I get into that, just wanted to touch on a couple of things that were said. I appreciate that Robert Adams is here representing the Historic Landmarks Commission. We are a familiar group of faces in the hearing room over at the David Gettner Meeting Room, and I want to explain that what we've done in terms of working with staff and processing this project, where we have 30 different structures that require individual reviews, and staff has been so excellent helping us, helped them in terms of the documentation and keeping track of which group has had this review, this positive comments, this level of approval. And also, in terms of the number of letter addendum reports, each alteration to the project, each, each structure that receives a final approval from the Historic Landmarks Commission requires that letter addendum report from the project historian as one of the mitigation measures. So, you know, the, the minutes packet is lengthy, and there's a reason for that, and we really appreciate everyone's indulgence and patience as we work our way through the design review process. Also, Kathleen mentioned a couple of substantial conformance determinations that were at a staff level, Cottage Four specifically and Cottage 12. Again, those require review and approval by the Landmarks Commission and subsequent reports prepared by the project historian. Now, I want to point out that those are not historically significant structures. If they had any significance in that regard, we, we would be restoring them and not demolishing them and replacing them with something that actually will contribute to the property. Up on the screen, I have the aerial of the property. I think we're all really familiar with it. Don't need to spend a lot of time. The property bounded by Listway Road on the south, Alvarado Place on the west, Mission Ridge Road on the north, and I've put in an approximate location of the eastern property boundary. Again, staff went over the project history. This is the site plan of the 2004 approval. You're going to see this up a couple of times in my slideshow, just so you could see the comparison of the site plan to what we're proposing today, or what we have in concept today, but what we're working towards, rather. All the structures that are outlined that are not colored on the slide are those that are currently permitted and under construction, again, as you saw at the site visit on Tuesday. So the revised master plan is composed of the, the pool down here, Group E, L, the valet parking lot in the northwest corner, Group K, the reapproval of cottages 27 and 28, and Group M in the northeast corner of the property that we call Mission Village. And I am going to go quickly through just some elevations and site plans of these elements. If you have any questions at any time, please don't hesitate to stop me. This is the pool plan. The fitness center is below. You can see that this south elevation is where the, the fitness center with daylight at the south. The fitness center constitutes about 2,700 square feet. These are the elevations of Building 27, Building 28. Now, this is one of the recent components that we were talking about and that Robert Adams was mentioning that we've been reviewing at Historic Landmarks Commission. This is Group L, the valet parking, central plant, and operations facility. This shows the below-grade plan, the area in gray being the operations facility. Up above in the north portion is the central plant, which is primarily underground. This is the parking level plan. A section. And we've just recently developed some preliminary landscape plans since our HLC meeting. These are not included in your packet. I just got them this morning and put them in the PowerPoint presentation. But what we show here is the, the parapet wall that will screen the parking, installation of canopy skyline trees in this location. We are studying the feasibility of retaining these eucalyptus trees in that corner. Now, you'll hear from neighbors are very supportive of the removal of the eucalyptus trees because of their concerns in terms of fire hazard, limbs falling on utility lines, that kind of thing. However, as we mentioned at the site visit, we have an arborist evaluating the health of those trees. So we'll have more information for you when we come back for project consideration about the trees. This is the tree protection plan. Here are the rendered elevations of the central plant parking lot. This is the north view looking from Mission Ridge because the site does dip down quite a bit to the south. These are the architectural elements that screen the, the central plant. The south view, if your, if your back was to the main building looking towards that parking lot, this is what you would see or not see, which is the idea. The east view, we have Cottage 29 in the foreground here, and the central plant screening in the background there. And then the west view here from Alvarado Place, again, 29 in the background there, 16 in the background, Mission Ridge Road up at this elevation, and our central plant. The parking lot is in this location. These, these are the plans that HLC reviewed on the 9th, and we are studying and looking at the comments that we received. So you're not seeing any plan, aside from the, the preliminary landscape plan being prepared, any response from our design team yet on that. This is the final component of the revised plan. Group M, Mission Village, constitutes five cottages that are proposed over the partially subterranean parking structure below, about 40 spaces in the valet lot. These are the elevations that we presented to Historic Landmarks Commission in June, June 11th, and received positive design comments. And that's just really quick. I'm happy to go back and look at anything more carefully if you should have any questions. As James mentioned, all the design elements of this project have been designed sensitively in terms of the character, to carry out the character of the Ellen Canto. We work constantly and have overview and direction from our project historian, Alex Cole. And as I've mentioned recently, we received positive comments from the And as I've mentioned recently, we received positive comments from the Historic Landmarks Commission on Groups L and M regarding neighborhood compatibility, mass bulk and scale, and density. Now, I know we've seen you a few times at your lunch meetings requesting substantial conformance determinations, and I did hear your message, I really did, about coming back to you one time for one consideration, final hearing on the completion of the project. And for a variety of reasons that I think you're aware of in terms of the letter that was presented to you on the 5th, and discussions that we had at the site visit this week, for example restructuring of the Orient Express organization, receiving positive design comments at HLC, going away and doing thorough feasibility analysis, has created subsequent design changes which took us back through an HLC process and an explanation to them, hey, we had to make a program change. Now we're at a position where the first phase of the project that you saw under construction, James mentioned, 22 buildings under construction, we are here requesting a phasing of this revised plan primarily and only for the central plant. I don't need to spend a lot of time on, would you hit the light, Jan, or is it already hit? Okay. It's really dark. Just some quick bullet points that James already hit on in terms of the critical path for the central plant, obviously necessary to complete the structures that are under construction. There's significant lead time to order this equipment as well and get it here to the site. We would need to test the central plant systems and bring services to the permitted structures. Clearly, we can't even complete our building inspections until the central plant's online so we can get the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems in place. We need to do some installation of life safety components, for example, the sprinkler systems and test all those, and then ultimately condition the structures to maintain the finishes on the interiors. I challenged the team many times on this issue because I was adamant about not coming before. Not that I don't like to be here, but I didn't want to, I wanted to fulfill your request. And I challenged the team, how significant would this be in terms of schedule to deliver an opening of the hotel while we continue to develop the remaining components of the revised plan? And I have been promised that this is a five to six month improvement in terms of the schedule to complete these structures that are under construction right now. Now, this is concept level review. I think you get that. We're still designing a lot of the project at this time. However, we do have identified discretionary applications which staff has included in the staff report for the revised plan. Given that today's concept is only a concept level hearing, we are looking forward to bringing you those additional details for consideration. If you just indulge me one more minute, Chair Myers.
If you could keep it to one minute, that would be really appreciated.
Sure. I just wanted to quickly overview some of the floor area considerations, the development plan requests, and the transfer of development rights, and just hit a couple of the project community benefits as a result of the project. We had some questions that were raised at the site visit. So, I'm sorry if you can't read that very clearly, I'll use white next time for my text. And I believe the staff report has an overview of this. From the 2004 approval, we have an existing development potential of just over 6,000 square feet. When we borrowed square footage from 27 and 28 to put into the basement of the main building, we ended up not needing that entire floor area ultimately, so that left a surplus of almost 900 square feet. So the site itself owns development potential of just over 7,000 square feet. Now I have the revised master plan floor area requirements itemized on the screen. Cottage 27, 655, Cottage 28, 1,300, the fitness center that's proposed beneath the swimming pool, that's a new component, that's about 2,700 square feet, and then the central plant operations facility constitutes approximately 11,700 square feet. So the difference, I didn't do the math up there for you, but the difference is about 9,300 square feet that we're proposing to transfer from ascending site. So that is the TEDR amount. And this is extremely critical to emphasize to you that that floor area that's being transferred from ascending site, we are in agreement with someone that has some floor area to sell us. We're doing our due diligence right now, so the next time we go to DART, we'll have something for staff to look at and also confirm that it's valid square footage, but we're doing those checks right now. That floor area is for operational use, period. It is not changing the number of guest rooms, guest amenities, any of these things. It is purely to operate the central plant and provide the back of house services, for example, necessary locker rooms to place onsite, much better than having them located offsite. You have to have those for a hotel, the laundry facilities, for example. So I just, it's so critical because I know that TEDRs are a pretty unique application request.
None of that number is from, that delta is applied to the fitness center?
That's correct. Because as you see, we have over 7,000 square feet in supply that the site has itself for development potential. The central plant is actually going to use some of that site development potential.
Okay.
Because the central plant's 11,700 square feet. We'll have a lot more information for you when we come back for project consideration in terms of how to make findings and justify the project.
Could you wrap up?
This is the, again, the 2004 site plan. This is our site plan. We find that it's much improved over what the commission was able to approve in 2004. We meet, the parking lot meets this setback on the north. We're holding the same line on the Alvarado frontage. We're taking what was surface parking over here and making cottages, removing those non-contributing structures in that corner and creating something that's more, much more architecturally compatible with the site. A lot more detail on the benefits around the central plant. I think James did a really good job of hitting on these. It's a state-of-the-art system. The previous approval had the air cooling towers and boilers located adjacent to the main building. This is a completely different mechanical system, centrally located, much more energy efficient, green, all those things. I'm not going to be answering any questions about any, you know, what rating it might have. I don't, I don't know at that, at this point in time, but I'll let you just go ahead and go through the bullet points there in terms of the architectural screening, that kind of thing. I mentioned the parking encroachment reduction. James mentioned the OEH, you know, high-quality product that will be delivered back to the community, and of course restoring and maintaining.
I'm looking for your concluding sentence.
This important historic resource. This is just an interesting slide of some of the restoration efforts that have been going on with these structures on site. We're here to answer your questions.
Thank you.
And to listen to your comments.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Bartlett?
I'll try and go quick. Are there any additional modifications with what you're proposing with the revised master plan from what was previously approved?
Chair Myers, to answer Commissioner Bartlett's question, yes, there are. If you don't mind, just, this makes it easier. Because the 2004 approval was retaining these structures in this area and simply giving them a facelift and keeping them in that configuration. So they're existing, non-conforming, they are encroaching, they're all two-story buildings, the setback is 40 feet, and we are changing that configuration. So the changes that we're proposing do trigger zoning modifications, but it's a reduction in terms of the floor area that's in the setback now versus what we're proposing.
Okay. And then in our packets, we didn't have the footprint for the garage under the Mission Village, as we just got the buildings above. So is there a landscape plan that we haven't seen yet that shows how you landscaped that? Since so much of the exterior beyond the footprint of the cottages is the podium of the garage?
Commissioner Bartlett, we are in the process of preparing our landscape plan. However, at the recent Historic Landmarks Review in June, Katie was there, Katie's been involved in developing this plan and just basically described to the commission what we're able to achieve in terms of landscaping there. And she can come up and give you some of that explanation, should she want it.
And we didn't really have civil plans or any grades indicated on any of the architectural exhibits. Was the height reduction of the surface parking accomplished in the drawings that we see since it went to Landmarks, or is this the same exhibit?
This was, that was one week ago. We are still.
So these are the same exhibits that they saw?
That's correct.
Okay.
If I may answer one more question that Commissioner Bartlett mentioned, we, it's true, we don't, we are in the process of developing civil plans. I intentionally left out the underground parking garage footprint because it had a previous, the previous design presented to HLC, which had an additional building in this location, still on it, and I didn't have time to revise that.
Just a quick follow-up on that. The ridge lines, I know you mentioned this at our site visit, but the ridge lines of those buildings in, in the Mission Village are the same as the ridge lines of the buildings that are there today?
That's true. Same or lower. They would not exceed the existing ridge lines.
Okay, thank you. Mr. White?
Can you flip, Trish, back to the original master plan one more time for me, please? Thank you. So, okay, thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. I appreciate hearing about your last best and final master plan. The previous master plans were before my time, so maybe you could bring me up to speed a little bit. Where was all the central plant located before? I didn't see anything in going back with the documentation that we got. Where this 11,000 feet worth of master plant were, master, not master plant, central plant? Where was that 11,000 feet located?
Chair Myers and Commissioner Thompson, I too was not involved in the 2004 entitlement, so I'm going to rely a little bit on my team that's behind me. I did learn that a lot of the mechanical equipment was placed adjacent to the main building, and I believe the remainder was in the basement of the main building.
So this stuff was in the basement, and now you're going to use the basement for?
Not just, not just the basement, but exterior and involved a lot of, I believe, above-grade utility connections throughout the site.
So this is a consolidation of things from around the site?
That's correct.
The other question, the other question I had is regarded to parking. All of your parking here is proposed is valet parking, two parking spaces, 97 rooms, 97 parking spaces. Presumably, the employees are going to need places. What about the people going to the restaurant or the bar? Where do all of those other parking requirements get accommodated?
Chair Myers, Commissioner Thompson, that's an excellent question and something that we would be providing you much more detail when we come back for consideration. My understanding in terms of the demand analysis that was carried out for the 2004 entitlement was that a particular rate was used for this type of resort, resort, Jan, you might have to help me out, hotel that looked at these additional uses that would occur on the property and was determined that the rate, one for one, one parking space for every one bed, one bedroom in each hotel room, would meet the parking demand. Now, I believe, my interpretation of that is that it's not a given that each guest would actually drive a single car to the hotel itself, so it works out. Now, thankfully, we have the valet configuration so that they can, you know, control their parking and that kind of thing. And maybe staff has something to add in terms of the previous entitlement, I'm not sure.
Ms. Allen, got the gist of it?
If you watched the Miramar hearing last night, you probably got a good treatise of exactly that analysis.
I was busy working on this and I didn't watch it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Allen, and I'm sorry if I push you a little fast there. We're on a tight schedule and we're fairly familiar with the material. I'm going to open up the public hearing for this project. I have a number of public speakers here. Our policy is to try to keep our comments within two minutes, two, three minutes, so if you do that, I'd appreciate it. Our first speaker is Jan Von Yert, and I see that he is also speaking on behalf of McKenna Spalding, who opposes and supports the project.
Good afternoon. I'm Jan Von Yert. We live exactly across the parking lot, or the proposed parking lot on Mission Ridge Road. I want to keep it short. We would really like that you consider the setbacks on Alvarado Place. As we feel it is a very busy intersection, Alvarado, Mission Ridge, and it needs to be opened up. It's important to keep it for safety, also for screening from the parking lot proposed. If you only have a 10-foot setback, you can't establish a proper screening with landscaping. We would support, though, a modification for a higher wall to screen the cars. We would like to see that they grade the parking lot to the maximum down, so it is below Alvarado, as there is a steep hill going uphill. I think there's at least six to 10 feet possible in grading. What could be done to sink the parking lot deeper so we don't have to look at cars driving by? We are in great support of removing all the eucalyptus trees as they are hanging over the street. I think saving them would be not beneficiary for anybody at this point. Replacing them with adequate landscaping and mature trees would be much supported throughout the neighborhood. We would love to see some kind of walkway integrated. It doesn't need to be a perfect one, but area where people can walk as the street around the corner from Mission, coming up Alvarado Place, turning right to Mission Ridge has no walking, and the street is narrowed. The street is narrowed for about 40 feet before it opens up again, and I am sure you saw that on your site visit. I think that's it for my comments. McKenna Spalding wasn't here, she had to leave to delay. She is in great support of a nice stone wall along Alvarado Place to keep it in scenery with what the surroundings are. She also would like to see the eucalyptus trees removed. And there was, you have it in front of you, the notes on the back, what else she wrote on top of my head. Maybe you could read the notes.
Okay.
Do me a favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I want to thank you all for coming and participating today. Your opinions are important to us. Ms. Spalding also notes that the eucalyptus trees are, would like to come down because of the fire hazard, trees falling after heavy rains, they're out of scale, so close to the buildings, they're poorly pruned in the past and unsightly. Any extension of a stone wall or a new stone wall to match existing stone wall on Alvarado Thank you. Farouk Nazarian, to be followed by Greg Parker.
Mr. Chairman, honorable members, I'm here with my wife Sally Nazarian. We own the 1978 Mission Ridge Road, which is right opposite the other side of Mission Ridge, directly from Ellen Canto and Alvarado. If you can see, that's exactly the house. And so we are very, sort of, been looking forward to opening of this hotel. Sally and I, we were looking forward to walk down, have a couple of margaritas without being worried about drink driving and coming back home. But this project has been taken for a long time, and we have been, obviously, been directly looking down to Ellen Canto. We've been, you know, patient, taking all the noises and things from that happening in this construction. The concern that I have is that we are, I can see it's a lot of things being referred to the 2004, you know, original, you know, planning permission, whatever it was. But the way I can see, ever since the Oriental Express took over the, you know, this property and project, they came up with different plan, a different sort of concept, different promises. And so... And some of those promises was, as if I can remember rightly, was the parking was supposed to be underground, the, on top would be, you know, tennis court, you know, planted and all that. And there were also some other significant, as far as we can see at least, you know, changes, was, which was actually the height of the building, it was increased even though the lady said it's two feet, but my understanding is by talking to architects, several different people actually were close to four feet, which actually cut down quite a lot of our views. But we still were happy to go along with the project because the project was presented to us as a package, you know. You have underground parking, you have tennis court on top, you know, the building height was high. Okay, we took one, we gave one, we received one, and we were planning, you know, we were happy with that. But slowly, slowly, as we can see, Orient Express are kind of like a, you know, clawing back, a little bit here, a little bit here. All we have to do now on this one, we have to do parking on the surface, parking, provide stuff, you know, sort of quarters underground, which is a bit kind of like a strange that with such a beautiful view, put all the stuffs in underground, you know, anyway. But apart from that, also to, for a five-star hotel, I hope that it could, you know, is supposed to be, to have a parking surface right in front of the hotel, I thought that it was not appropriate for the hotel, but also for us. Right on that corner, you have parking lot this side, and you have a parking lot that side, and we would be subjected to the whole huge, a lot of noise and kind of like, then the problem is that with the, with this, you know, with the, with the business park here, people come in the morning, park their car until 5 o'clock, and they take the car and move away. Hotel, they're coming, people coming every five minutes, two minutes, come in and out, in and out, and we would be subjected to a lot of noise, fume, and all that, right opposite and all the neighborhood around. So we were hoping that El Encanto would have had, instead of putting their people underground, put the car underground, and keep the people above the ground, and, you know, spare us from the noise and, you know, and inconvenience of having all this parking in front of our house. Apart from that, there, there were, there were discussions about the eucalyptus trees. I would like to say that actually one eucalyptus tree on Mission Ridge about a few years ago came down right on, in front of our gate. That was about three minutes before Sally was taking our kids to the school. And if it was three minutes, Sally was, was differently, was right on top of, you know, my cars and my kids and my wife and kids. So one of the trees here on Alvarado is actually about 60 degrees. Every time I'm driving, I duck my head, just in case it's gonna come up and stop my car.
Okay, could you wrap up?
Pardon?
Could you wrap up, please? Could you wrap up, please?
Okay, I do. So anyway, sorry about that. I'm actually taking my wife's time.
Okay.
So, so anyway, that, I'm, I'm, I'm wrapping it up just by saying that we are in support of, in support of the project, in support of removing the eucalyptus trees. I'm concerned about, they said they're gonna put, put the new trees on, on Mission Ridge in front of thing, in front of their new parking, proposed parking. I'm concerned that there should be some kind of trees not to cut off our views because we are right directly looking down into the, you know--
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Greg Parker will be our last speaker.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm actually speaking about Mission Village, which the other people didn't really speak to. The existing condition there, I don't know if you walked along Mission Ridge Road in your site visit, but the existing condition there is actually quite poor. You've got two buildings substantially encroaching in the setback, total flat to a line parallel to the street. The, I wouldn't say the worst, but close to it, the '60s architecture, metal windows, flat walls, no articulation, nothing. And what they proposed is diagonal buildings to the seat, increasing a little bit, turning the back a little bit less to the street, a much more interesting and compatible architecture, and they're asking for modifications. And the reason I came down here to speak is because I have been in front of you before on occasion and may bear some scar tissue even of resistance to modifications, resistance to transfer development rights and those kind of things. And I know you're all appointed because of your wisdom and your perspective, and this strikes me as a case where a modification not only is required, but really should be encouraged because they're reducing an existing encroachment, they're vastly improving a subpar situation. And although historically, I know there's been some reluctance, we live right across the street from Mission Village. We actually, our property spans the entire width of that Mission Village project. We're the only ones really to be impacted of that and people walking on the street. And I think it's something that ought to be strictly encouraged. I wrote a letter talking a little bit about views. That'll be reserved for a further discussion. Having to view planes, it's not just the ridge height that matters, when you move the same ridge height further out on a podium deck, you, some of those impacts, that'll all come up later. The one thing I would share both with my neighbors' comments and contrary to the HLC comment, there was an HLC comment about preserving as many as possible eucalyptus on the northern edge. I actually think that's wrong. I think that you have to look carefully at view angles. There are some volunteer sprouts that come up there, some of them 30, 40 feet high now that will block views, that will be, and since contrary to the city's ordinance about using landscaping to maintain views, I think that a blanket statement about preserving as many as possible really has to be thought through and analyzed more carefully, but that'll be a subject for future discussions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll close the public comment for this project and bring it back to the commission. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I thought we got some good comments out of the, the people that did speak and certainly, is it, is it Nazarian, is that your name? I thought that Mr. Nazarian's comment certainly was, was one that came to my mind, and that is why aren't the people on top and the cars down below? And I think that, I'd appreciate perhaps getting a little feedback on that from, from you.
Commissioner White, we did a lot of feasibility studies. Once a concept was presented under a previous executive, CEO of Orient Express, where his desire was to have a tennis court and parking below, I want to dovetail to, a previous question was asked. I came on board June of 2005, so again, I'm not familiar with the entitlement program that was approved 2004, but honestly, looking at that entitlement program, I do not know how that hotel was going to support operations. I, I just truly don't know that there was any square footage designated. We mentioned something about area in the main building, et cetera. I mean, that was minor and insignificant to support an eight-acre parcel. The feasibility studies that we did specifically in that northwest corner, primarily because of the grade slope, did not work to our feasibility as it did in the northeast to put the parking below. In concert to that, the remaining square footage above grade was not adequate within the setbacks, within the view corridors, within everything of that element to host, let's say, 8,000 square feet above grade. That would be taking the, the footprint of the main building and putting it into that corner of two-story elements that just wouldn't fit. So that's how we, we started looking at the feasibility of that in the studies. We did several in addition to that, just, just to try and carry the program out.
Okay. Thank you. All right, comments. I believe it was in Mr. Parker's letter that, that the request for story poles was, was put in there for the Mission Village component, and obviously, that would come forward when the master plan, that component of the master plan comes forward. But for me, that the, as I say, I, I, I'm troubled by, by cars being above ground there, and clearly that, if they are above ground, they need not to be seen, and, and you need not to be disrupting the Nazarian's view. So I don't know how we, I mean, even though I know private views are not a, a city issue, I think they are in the conditional use permit situations. And so this is, this, well, again, I'm just, I'll state my own--
Well, I won't, but I want to say it's not a conditional use permit.
Well, all right.
That's what I want to clarify.
Lots of mods, lots of special requests here. Excuse me if I use, misspoke on the, on the actual term, development plan and modifications. So I, I, I want to be reassured that the Nazarian's view is not, that the landscaping that goes in on this parking area is harmonious with the views that are immediately behind Another element that is concerning is the, all of this mechanical infrastructure located away, whereas previously, it was sort of in-house, one would kind of, it's sort of self-regulating, you're not going to have big noises going on with your guests, amidst your guests. Whereas now, a lot of that is being put, being proposed to be put on the edge of your property. And so my, what I, what I would like to see out of that is that that's inaudible to the neighbors. It just, it must not, just can't be outsourcing those problems to, to others. That's, those are definitely, that's the making of, of bad neighbors, as you well So those, those are my, oh, and then next is solar. What solar photovoltaic water heating opportunities do you have, and would you bring that forward with your, certainly the next phase of your master plan? There must be some good ones, and that would be something that I'd like to see move forward in your, in your complete master plan. Mr. Van Aanier brought up a higher wall and lower grade on the, on the parking. I believe that that's what HLC was speaking to, was the, was the, at least the grade, and then that whole, the combination of wall, grade, and landscaping, HLC is hearing. I, I second those, that combination of, of concerns. You're, if you're going above ground with the parking here, it needs to be a perfect fit. Otherwise, of course, as, as I have said repeatedly before, I'm excited to see this project moving forward. It was, once again, awe-inspiring to be up there seeing the, the kind of work that's being done, and I, I wish you every bit of speed on this. And I, I can support the, the separation out of the mechanical from the other elements to, to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair Myers. I was also struck when we were up on site with the quality of the work that has been done so far, and that is clearly in progress. And that, I appreciate that because it lends so much credibility to your request, that the, clearly the, the quality is there and, and obvious good management in terms of keeping the project going. We have plenty of neighboring projects, neighboring city projects that we could compare it to, like the Miramar that had a 10 and a half hour planning commission meeting for Montecito, and then that was continued. So the credibility factor that you bring to this, with the quality of the work you've done so far, is appreciated. Having said that, the, the completeness of the plans that we had to look at was not what one would expect for a master plan decision, or, it's a concept, it's a concept review, but, for example, we, we definitely would expect to see a complete landscape plan in order to comment on that, and that got my attention. Having said that, I will be okay with the phasing that you've requested, but I do want to make a couple of, of comments on the project. I was also struck by the neighbor's comment of why put the people underground and the cars above ground? Well, one reason is if you put them below ground, you add eight to 10 feet to your project because you have to accommodate headroom over the cars, which if they're above ground, you don't, because they're, they're open to the sky. But it still might be worth considering some reconfiguration of the program that you've got there, which is cars, and some mechanical that could probably go into pits or not need much of anything, and where the people go. And the, the idea of putting people underground just bothers me, you know, it's your workers and they deserve air and sunlight, too, more so than the cars do. And it, it would be worth considering a modest but attractive building above ground, cars and mechanical underground, and then the above ground could also, in addition to those modest, because they are back-of-house buildings, those buildings could be some more gardens and perhaps a place for solar panels. One thing that struck me about the project as it is, is it's not, it's not very ambitious in terms of its greenness or sustainability, and we do look for that more so now than we did in the approval of the original master plan. Just a few list items. If we were looking at the landscape plan, and I am gonna ask that, that go back to HLC, I know staff thought HLC gave it the go-ahead, but I think they really need to see it again. That and the pool would be included because the pool and the landscape plan really complement each other. But if we were commenting on the landscape plan, I'd be commenting on the pedestrian access, the crosswalk that goes across the street, across Alvarado, to the sidewalk in the area. When we first looked at this, I was on the commission and we were trying to figure out a decent pedestrian route both in and around this site because there's no sidewalks on this side of the street, and the public didn't want them, but the, the agreement was then, okay, well, we'll use the sidewalk that goes up the Riviera side of the property and have a very nice welcoming crosswalk that will let people from the neighborhood walk to the restaurant or the bar and feel welcome in the facility. And I don't want to lose that sense of welcome to the neighborhood because people will want to walk in. And one thing that can happen when something gets a little bigger and a little grander is it kind of doesn't feel so welcoming to the neighbors and the people that might be walking in. And I'm asking you, please don't lose that sense of access for, for your, your daytime customers as opposed to your nighttime, your, your guests who are gonna be paying probably a lot of money to stay in these rooms. Please keep that pedestrian welcome. And I believe you're, you're already required to keep the neon signs, right? The one at APS and Mission, and then also the one that's right on front of your building. Those, to me, are essential to, to keeping a, a certain historic thread with this project and this neighborhood. And lastly, I want to talk about two things that I noticed that, pardon the pun, stuck out for me at the, looking at the model. And one of them is the swimming, the new swimming pool configuration. And it looks like a cruise ship to me, that pool raised up above the ground and forcing itself out into the, what used to be a rolling grassy hill. I wish that could be looked at again. You're adding some square footage onto it, and there's just something not quite right about it for me. I didn't like the way the pool was originally either, and part of it had to do with how one of your guests would be likely to get from the pool to the spa, which, when I go to a resort like this, there's an expectation that the pool and the spa kind of go together. So, yeah, it was bad to begin with, and we said, can't you do something better? And I'm not sure what you did is better, is what I'm trying to say. And since you're coming in for a concept review of your new master plan, I think maybe you're not done, for my, for my sense, you're not done with the work on the pool, and I hope it can be improved. And then Cottage 31, that sits atop this sort of parapet on the edge of the new podium parking. We didn't have a clear picture of how that wall is gonna be treated, but it's a, it's a pretty large wall. It looks like you're gonna put sandstone on it, and I wonder if there's a better way to do that? The, the way that Cottage 31 is set up on top of the-- to do that, the way that Cottage 31 is set up on top of the corner of that building. And just in closing, it's such a beautiful project, and we are, despite picky comments, extremely appreciative of the good management and the excellent design that is going into this treasure of our city. So thank you very much.
Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll echo my colleagues. I think they've hit the major points. As somebody who worked on the OI Valley Inn renovation, I really appreciate the complexity that you're dealing with and the interconnectedness of everything having to work together. Focusing on the specific request for this central plant, I support the approach. I think getting the hotel online six months sooner generates better part of more than a million bucks just in transaction occupancy tax. That goes a long way to our Creeks program and our city revenue stream. So I think it's -- in and of itself, is a real impetus to get this thing moving. My main issues of concern, I think, are going to focus on the Mission Village area and how well you can landscape that, being on top of a parking podium. And I'm sensitive to the setbacks, but hearing Mr. Parker's comments, I think those are certainly something to be taken into account. There's no scarring from this commissioner's perspective. And I think while public views are -- private views are not a matter for our consideration, I think the approach that Mr. Parker took in eliminating three of his bullets, I think, are very important for you to work with him on. And I'm sure that you will come together on this and be back in front of us on the same side of the fence on that particular piece. And lastly, as far as the parking goes, it's a matter of being compatible with the neighborhood. I know you have a parking lot across Alvarado Place, but also, it is in a residential neighborhood, so I'm going to be looking to the future development plans that come before us with an eye towards neighborhood compatibility. But overall, I think you're doing a great job. Keep it up, and welcome to Santa Barbara citizenship.
Thank you, Mr. Justice. Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I wasn't on the commission when the original master plan came through, so I'll tread lightly on that, but I am quite familiar with the property, and I was married there, and I cherish the fact that you're saving the lovely parts of these grounds, and I can't wait for it to reopen. With that being said, I'll focus my attention on the critical areas of the site. First of all, I think the phasing is a great idea for the, you know, comments that have already been made. For the northwest corner, the parking lot, what I see compared to the original master plan is that what you've done, you've eliminated the elevated tennis court that was above the parking that was at surface grade where you drive into the site. So I think in terms of the neighbors, you've improved the views by eliminating that raised court and the subsequent walls. There were fences that would have been around it. I find that the current layout of the parking being lower and having the central plant even down below that is more out of the neighbor's presence or foreground. And I think the addition of the trees and light wells in the midst of that structure will really help and shield it from above so that you're not looking down on it from the higher properties. Also, it's more pulled back from the corner intersection of Alvarado and Mission Ridge, leaving more opportunity for landscaping compared to the prior master plan. The northeast corner, the Mission Village, my questions, I think, alluded to my concern. There's a lot of expressed podium beyond these small cottages, given the extent of the garage below. So I would be looking forward to seeing plans that hopefully develop true landscape above that parking podium and not just being a big, hard-surface area. So obviously, we don't have those plans to look at, but when that comes back in the subsequent phase, that would be my suggestion, is that you try and incorporate that. The other solution might be to consider a sloping plain in that expanse of parking that more matches the slope of the terrain. And you could step the cottages on top of that podium and actually have true landscape depth on top of the podium as well, so that it doesn't look like just a big, hard-surfaced area, which I think was more noticeable in the three-dimensional model that we saw at the site trip. As to the -- and I do support the modification in that area. I think for the neighbors, it's certainly a better expression of architectural frontage to the street, to turn those buildings on an angle, and the garage is below grade, so that's not an issue for me, as long as we can get the landscape. The other modifications for the cottages 27 and 28, I think, are quite minor. I'm certainly in favor of those. But I do share the concerns on the swimming pool. I'm afraid that, at least from the drawings that we're seeing so far, I don't want this to look like a big, stone Machu Picchu structure sitting out on that site with a pool elevated in the air. So I think whatever we can do to try and get that down or bring the grade up more around it to nestle it in, I think Commissioner Jacobs was on track with that, so I would look forward to further development of that area. And as to the T E D R of the additional footage, I think it's appropriate because the location that you're putting all that footage is below grade for the plant, and it's not expressing itself as a volume or mass to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, too, can support the separation of the phasing for the physical plan. I understand that perfectly. But I am in agreement with Commissioner White regarding that it be silent to the neighbors because some of those functions are very -- well, most of them are very noisy. That was why I asked my question about the generator on the site visit, because if you had a giant generator that was firing off, even for testing, what it would release into the neighborhood and what it would create in noise would just be a real problem. So I appreciate knowing that that's going to be subterranean, and I wanted to mention that in the meeting. I do believe that the Mission Village needs more work, and that's been discussed. I would like to see the stone walls for the neighborhood compatibility where it's appropriate along the roads that are public. And I share the concern about the swimming pool, but I noticed in the old photograph you put up about the swimming pool that it had a glass railing. I want to point out that those are not acceptable in the city, that, you know, we're trying to avoid that. So as you're developing your plan, we won't be looking for that. And I guess that's about it. The T E D R, I'm okay with. So -- oh, I had a great idea. I think -- you know how we have that traditional -- you know those little secret stairs on the Riviera, and there's little gates here and there, and little surprise, almost like follies? I think you ought to put in one for your neighbors, you know, so they can just come down and get a drink and slake that poor man's thirst. So you have this little, like, inner Riviera secret flight of stairs, you know, for the pub crawl. So it's just an idea I have, but I thought it sounded like great fun and more of what the Riviera is about. So if you can figure out some sort of, you know, rustic connectivity for the neighbors, you know, little margarita trail, something like that. So you're a good neighbor. There you go. So keep talking to your neighbors, and I think you're doing a good job of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, a lot of good comments from the other commissioners. I won't go back and repeat any of that. And I'm also okay with the phasing proposal when you bring in your final, last, best master plan. But I'll be looking for some more on parking. Obviously, a hotel complex of this nature is going to have a lot of employees. You're going to be attracting people to the restaurant that are not staying there. Meeting room, having -- attracting people to come there for meetings was mentioned, and that's going to require parking, too. So not all of the people going to the bar are going to be neighbors that are going to be walking across the street. Some people are going to be driving from downtown, and all of that's going to require parking. And it seems to me that that's going to exceed the number of spaces you've got there. I think we need to look into that parking demand more. The other area that I would like to see covered in when you bring it back to us is some real evaluation of what goes on at the intersection of Mission Ridge and Alvarado, and also the driveway to the northeast parking in Mission Ridge. That's a real safety issue there, and I'm going to be looking to see that safety's enhanced from what's there now and not degraded. And we will want to see details about the T E D R when you come back to us, make findings for that. So other than that, that's the only comments that I have that are different than what was brought up already.
Yes, I, too, concur with everything that my fellow colleagues have noted. I didn't hear too much comment about the eucalyptus trees. I think that they should come down. I see no need for them to stay whatsoever. I think that your -- whatever landscape plan you bring forward would certainly enhance the whole place more than those eucalyptus trees, and they are fire hazards. I appreciated the comments about the pedestrian experience on the street by one of the public commenters, and I think that should be looked into more. I really like what you've done with the Mission Village area, and I have no further comments to make on that. My focus is really on that parking structure and how that -- I think there's a lot more creativity that can go into it. I think that possibly lowering it a little bit more, the use of photovoltaics, you know, I'm really not too sure of how it looks right now. I don't know how walls play into the picture and how landscaping really blocks it, but if you could get photovoltaics on the open area that would help mitigate noise and light pollution to the neighborhood, I think that might go some distance as well. I don't know if that can be had or not, but it's certainly worth studying. In favor of the T E D R of square footage, and I like the swimming pool, but I appreciate what's been said about it. You know, it really didn't occur to me before, but I think that Mr. Bartlet had some interesting notions about, you know, trying to hide it a little bit so it's not so obtrusive. I think that's about it. I really appreciate what people have come and said and helped to this discussion. Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate your comments about the yuks. I had that on my list, and there are some good yuks around the place, but they're hard to find, and not the blue gums in particular. So thank you for bringing that up. And I wanted to comment that the parking, I believe, in the 2004 master plan is sort of in the heyday, the zenith of parking demand being used as the tool for allocating parking, and that zoning wasn't perhaps considered as strongly, certainly, as it's being considered today. So this will be interesting to watch that unfold. And then last is I just urge the development team to be really working with the Nazarians to, whether it's story poles for the landscaping or whatever, to really dial that in so that it's as compatible as possible and the knowledge is transferred back. Good communication occurs there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no more comments. Again, Robert, thanks for stopping by and sticking around for our comments. Really appreciate it. Certainly.
Thank you very much for your direction. This gives me a lot of good ideas on which to share with HLC as we really continue to work as a team with the private developer and you and HLC. We're looking to a new era of good communication and cooperation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Let me ask about it. Okay, this brings us to item number five, which is our administrative agenda. Jan, regarding to the minutes, is there anything that's critical that we need to look at here? Or can we postpone these till next time? And are there any committee and liaison reports that anybody wants to share? Mr. Justice? No.
Ms. Jacobs.
Just briefly, we -- myself and Commissioner Bartlet and city planner Betty Wies attended a conference on form-based coding, form-based zoning, and we'll, at a future date, will give you a longer presentation. But it was a very good conference and some substantial stuff for the city to consider, in particular, as we look at the upper state street area. This is going to be a tool that is already adopted by the city as something that will be used in that area, so I feel like we've got some very good talking points on it now at this point.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Justice and Mr. Thompson and I attended a meeting of the Plan Santa Barbara Subcommittee, which I hope the results of which will be presented nicely at our workshop, Plan Santa Barbara Workshop on Policy Issues tonight. It is at 6:00 in the Faulkner Gallery. It will be followed by another workshop on the 23rd, Wednesday, the 23rd, same place, hoping that the public will be in full attendance. So I will look for a motion to continue till next week, the review of the staff hearing officer and the action on the minutes so noted in.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Seven zero. Also, Mr. Vincent, regarding our adjournment.
To recess?
Well, may I ask who has plans to attend tonight? Can I see a show of hands here? One, two? Okay, I guess we need to recess. Mr. Justice, move to recess to our workshop. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. This is a recess, not only to this workshop on the 17th, but continued to the 23rd because we won't be back here until then.
I think we'll also be dealing with that at your next meeting as well on the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good night.